Call the meeting to order. Mayor Lee, would you lead us in the plates, please? Thank you. Ian, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Janice Zerker.
Here.
Mrs. Waring.
Mr. Reiner.
Here.
Mayor Luckleyter.
Here.
Mr. Gerber.
Here.
Mr. Keenan. Vice Mayor Saleh.
Here.
Thank you. Well, to begin with this evening, we have a special presentation to make involving the Wendy's Company. And so if John Barker, who is Chief Communications Officer and Senior Vice President, and Mr. David Fersora, Director of Government Relations, if you would join me at the podium here. David, did I pronounce your name correctly? Say it.
Fersora.
That's better than I said it. All right. Well, John and David, on behalf of the City of Dublin, we'd like to thank you and the Wendy's Company for the great hospitality that you showed the entire community by allowing us to hold the 2013 State of the City Town Hall Meeting in the Thomas Conference Center this past March. Of course, unexpectedly, your staff went above and beyond in service and assistance to our staff and exemplifying the Wendy's exceptional customer service. We'd also like to take this opportunity to congratulate the Wendy's team on the recognition that you received with respect to the state-of-the-art Conference Center. We are aware that it's been designated with the Silver recognition by the leadership in energy and environmental design, otherwise known as LEEDs, by the U.S. Green Building Council. So that's quite an achievement. Expect that you're proud, and certainly the City of Dublin is proud to say that. And you can be certain that, you know, we will make that known to, you know, folks that come to our city, and we're proud of all those kinds of designations that we have in the city, and hope that there are more to come. So as a token of our appreciation and gratitude for you allowing us to conduct our State of the City Town Hall Meeting, we would like to make a contribution to the Dave Thomas Foundation for Adoption. I was kind of hoping for one of those real big checks.[198.62][198.62](Laughter). But, you know, hopefully this will do. But let me present this to you. A round of applause would be good here.[208.01][208.01](Applause). And I'm going to pass it off to you, gentlemen, if you'd like to make a couple of comments about the State of the City event that occurred there, and the designation that you received for the Conference Center, and how everything's going at the headquarters. I'll give it to you, John.
Thanks, Mayor. First of all, thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts. Many of you know that Dave Thomas founded Wendy's in 1969. And even though he founded it down on the east side of Columbus, moved to Dublin and always felt that this was home for the Wendy's Company, and we're so happy to be back. Partnered with the City of Dublin to bring the headquarters here. You know, was here for a long time, moved to Atlanta, and we came back. And the city was fantastic in helping us come back, as was the state of Ohio. You know, that Dave's personal charity and our charity is the foundation where we take care of, try to find loving homes, permanent loving homes for children. So we'll put this money to good use. We'll be able to hopefully find some children a great home permanently anywhere around the United States where our Adoption Foundation does great work. We were very happy to have you all at the State of the City. It was a wonderful event. Our team over there, that was our first big meeting since we opened that Conference Center up, and our team over there was absolutely thrilled. It was a fantastic meeting, and to see all the exciting things that are happening here in the city, everybody was discharged up. And so we were very happy you would come over and do that. And it's an open invitation every year for the annual meeting, if you'd like to come back over. So we'd like you to consider that. So thank you very much. David? Any words? Go ahead. Well, I just want to say thank you to city staff and to the council, to the mayor. It was a great relationship. We continue to work with you, and we look forward to future together. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, John. Thank you, David.[325.52][325.52](Applause). Now, we're going to have an update regarding the I-270-U-S-33 interchange, which hopefully some of you have heard about through the media in the last week or so. We have Tom Slack here, Planning and Engineering Manager, ODOT District 6, and Frazan Ahmed, Deputy Director, ODOT District 6, if you'd like to come forward. Good evening.
Good evening. Is this thing on? Okay.
Um, just pull that closer. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Frazan Ahmed. I serve as the Deputy Director for ODOT District 6. Thank you very much for receiving us here this evening. This is a great project for central Ohio. I've heard about this project for the last six or seven years. And I can tell you that this is a unique project in that whereas mega projects have a tendency to draw on and on and on, this one's working in the opposite direction. When I first got involved with this project, I heard that we were planning to break ground in 2018 or 2019. After about a year of working with the City of Dublin, we brought that back to about 2016. And then last year, when we got together, the City of Dublin and ODOT District 6, we decided that if it's worth doing, then it's worth doing now. Forget about 2015 and 2016. We're going to break ground on this project in 2014. This is going to be a great opportunity for us to showcase this part of central Ohio. It is needed for freight, it is needed for commuters, and it is needed for business growth and development. I can assure you that we have had businesses reach out to us in the past who have often expressed concern about the congestion on the north side of central Ohio, primarily in the 33 corridor, as well as the 270 and 23 corridor. We are breaking ground on that one this year, and hopefully we'll be back here next year celebrating and letting you guys know that we are ready to play with some dirt and take out our shovels and break ground again in August of 2014. In addition to the fact that we're bringing this project back, there are two other things that are worth mentioning. One of them is the tremendous partnership that exists between ODOT District 6 and the City of Dublin. Under Marshall's leadership, we've got the entire Dublin team here, Paul Hammersmith, Jeanne, and Tina. They might as well be part of the ODOT District 6 group.[478.24][478.24](Laughter). It doesn't matter. And by the same token, Tom Slack, who is the head of my engineering department, he and his team might as well be part of the Dublin group. I wish that we had more partnerships like that. ODOT District 6 covers eight counties. We have a lot of cities and a lot of municipalities we work with. None of them are as good as Dublin. Maybe I shouldn't say that, but that's okay. I think it's okay. I don't think you guys mind. The other thing I'd like to mention is that the design that we have come up with is a very innovative design, and it's a design that ODOT, the City of Dublin, and the consultant CH2M Hill worked on together, and it is going to be the first of its kind in the United States. I think that's notable. I think it's notable because it will allow us to get into construction soon, and it will allow us to construct while maintaining traffic. And as you know, that is good for business as well as for commuters. I think I've said enough. I'd like to introduce Tom Slack, who's the head of our design group, to go into the details, into the funding plan, into the staging, and explain how we're going to get this project done for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not quite as tall as Frazan. I'll turn it this way.[549.41][549.41](Laughter). Well, thank you all once again for having us, the opportunity to brief you on this important project. In particular, I wanted to bring everybody up to date on what's happened in the last half year or so. There's been a lot of great work, as Frazan mentions, and it can't be mentioned enough, the partnership with ODOT Dublin, Federal Highway as well, Morpsy, in order to bring this project to fruition. I particularly want to thank, once again, the staff, and particularly Councilmember Keenan, who all endured or participated in a workshop regarding this project, got a crash in engineering course as well. I think it was very good to have this inclusive process because, as engineers, we don't always have that good insight on the goals regarding the livability, regarding the economic development. And it was great to have that insight, again, from a lot of members, the diverse group, for that inclusive process. So what we have come up with is an innovative solution. It's a cost-effective solution to achieve those goals. At the right screen? Excellent. I'd just like to kind of walk you through what you see on screen. If you take a look, this is Phase 1. What we have recommended is a two-phase solution. Phase 1 handles most of the problems. In fact, it handles all of the immediate problems in the interchange. And I'll talk to you about the timing of Phase 2. That's one of the more exciting portions of this. Construction cost for Phase 1 is estimated at about $77 million. We are looking at about $7.5 million worth of right-of-way. There will also be some design costs. I think you've all seen that rough estimate in the $90 to $95 million range for total project cost moving forward. And you can also see that the footprint that you're looking at is a little different than some of the alternatives studied. Just kind of walk through, and I'm going to come this way so I can point the screen also. Starting, coming from Muirfield-Avery Road towards the interchange. The first thing we're going to do is reorganize the ramps and set up an additional lane, an add-drop lane, if you will, between Avery and 270. It's going to alleviate a lot of that congestion between those interchanges that tends to foul everything up in the morning. If you're headed into Old Dublin, you're going to continue to do what you used to do, stay on the left, and continue over the bridge and straight across 33. For those of you who are used to using this loop ramp to head to the north and east, that ramp will be eliminated as part of this project. We are eliminating two of the loop ramps, which serves to greatly increase the safety and also the capacity because we're going to eliminate all four of these areas where the traffic is weaving. Everybody wants that same piece of pavement as the cars exchange through there. What will happen now is you'll have an exit ramp for 270 that will take you both to the south and to the north. This north ramp will go over 270, under 33, and continue along to 270. We're also adding a signal here for the northbound exit ramp. For those of you who are familiar with this area, trying to get across to Post Road with the ramp that has that continuous movement, that signal will allow traffic to stop alternately on 33 and on the ramps so that that traffic can get across to Post Road or France Road as needed without, again, having that mixing and weaving that creates so many of the crashes and the safety problem we have today. Looking in the opposite direction, we are removing this ramp as well. So when you're coming from the France-Post Road area, your exit will be here. You can either continue north on 270, or it splits off to go under 33, and then down over 270 into 270 South. Now, you notice these two ramps that we have, and this is the innovative part, the two ramps we have nestled into that infield actually will have traffic traveling opposite British style, if you will, but they will be separated by a median barrier. The people driving those ramps, it's directional, they won't even know what's going on on the other side. The other feature for this direction is the exit ramp from 270. Right now, this ramp needs to be two lanes, as anyone can attest. We also need to deal with, again, that mixing of traffic between 270 and Avery Road. In order to provide the two lanes, we're actually providing an exit here that will lead you on the outside to the Avery Road exit, or if you're headed to 33 out further towards Marysville, you would continue on this ramp, which will bring you on the inside of the lanes, again, avoiding a lot of that mixing of traffic in the portion between 270 and 33, or along 33 between 270 and Avery Road. This is the second portion, which features the so-called flyover ramp that replaces this loop ramp, that's the 270 north to, thank you, battery's running out, that replaces the 270 north to 33 west movement. Now, what we have found is, based on traffic projections, because we're getting rid of all of these other weaves, all of the congestion, all the conflict points, really, all we need to do to replace that ramp is going to be based strictly on traffic growth. Our projections show that's going to be anywhere from 10 to 15 years out. It's a decision we can make to add this phase at a later point when the traffic warrants, rather than trying to do some of these improvements that are really based on that future traffic count. We are required to do our planning for a 20-year horizon, so that's why this comes into play. The cost of this additional loop ramp is about $25 million with some extra right-of-way, about half a million of right-of-way involved in there as well. But we think that's something at least worth deferring on in order to make the funding work for the overall project and get the project, as Frazan mentioned, delivered sooner. One other note is we did hold a public meeting last Thursday at the REC Center. Had some good input there, a lot of positive, and I've heard it throughout, even on the news reports, something needs to be done here. So again, the urgency is to get it done sooner rather than later. The comment period is open for this project, and comment forums are available both on the City of Dublin and the ODOT websites. Like to talk a little bit about the funding plan, and this was as it was submitted to the Transportation Review Advisory Council, which is a ODOT statewide council that makes recommendations for the large projects, the interchange reconstruction-type projects statewide. And what was found is that the high level of local participation, when Cindy Madge Grigsby reported out on this project last week, that high level of local participation was well-received at the track meeting. And we feel that this is a great partnership from the funding level, the willingness and the ability. And again, I think this is something where the commitment of the City of Dublin is going to be instrumental to moving forward with the project on this aggressive schedule, as well as the commitment of other local leaders within Morpsy. And with that, I can take any questions regarding the technical layout, or myself or Jeanne can help answer any questions on the funding and, again, Dublin's role.
Will 161 going to the west, will that be widened? As those two interchanges come in, there's two ramps to divert?
Yes. 161-33 in this area will actually be four lanes wide. You'll have one of those lanes that adds on or drops off at Avery Road and adds on and drops off, actually, two lanes that add on and drop off in the area of 270. So it'll be carrying two through lanes over top of 270, four lanes in between. And then it will narrow back down to two lanes as we go back out to Post Road. Again, the idea, as part of the overall study, does 33 get widened out to three lanes, can, you know, Post, out to Scott's Lawn, out to Marysville, and that's going to be on a separate track, again, as the traffic requires it.
Now, you commented on the uniqueness of this design, and we were excited to hear that we were going to be the only community in the United States to have this kind of solution. Where has this occurred elsewhere in the world?
There are some variations of this. Actually, our roadway geometrics expert, who serves on a couple national committees, we pulled up some maps of areas in Illinois and Missouri have similar layouts, but not quite, again, the way that we have everything nestled in here and then replacing with the existing interchange as well. A couple of those were actually built from scratch, so they did them a little differently, but the retrofit here.
Thank you.
Tom, are we picking up the lanes all the way from Avery Muirfield to 270 ramps, both ways?
Yes.
Is that's going to be four lanes both ways, all the way to Avery Muirfield?
Correct.
That's terrific. And I'd just like to compliment you on the collaborative nature of the meetings. I understand it was a first of a kind, where we pulled the engineering group together, city staff, the ODOT folks. I think there were some other public entities involved as well, which was really helpful, I think, putting everybody in the same room and getting them on the same page. Are you doing that anywhere else now that you've experienced that, or did you decide to throw it out?
I don't know that we've, I don't know that we've brought everybody into the same room. We have done similar collaboration with City of Columbus on the 70-71, but it's still bringing some different entities together at different times, but nothing that's really gotten into that much detail on the engineering and the technical end of it.
And we sure appreciate it, and I know it was very helpful to the process for staff and everybody else.
Thank you.
How will traffic be maintained during the construction?
We are working through the details of that. We are expecting that in order to reconstruct these ramps, there will be some short-term closures. There will be a lot of opportunity here to build the new movements before we take the old movements out of commission. So that's going to be the focus of the construction sequencing. But there will be times when we have to do final paving on the ramps or some of the loop ramp work. We could have some closures, 15 to 30 days. We could have some closures that are simply overnight closures. But as we've typically done, our contractors are required to give us seven to 14 days notice on that type of activity, and we're going to continue that public outreach effort with Dublin city staff as well.
Excellent. So assuming that we break ground next August, when will we all be driving on the brand-new interchange?
We figure this is going to be a two-year, a two-year project. So with something like that, I would expect in 2015, at least some of the movements, if not most of the movements, will be available to motorists, and then the idea in 2016 that finishing up the work and getting everything finally into its final location.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight as well.
Mayor Lee.
Hello. I just wanted to say that, along with Mike's comments, that I would encourage the city and ODOT and any other entities that are important to the project to really pen what this has done and to really, you know, make a history document. Because I do agree with you that, at least from our vantage point, it looks like a terrific collaboration, and in all ways, I mean, with Morpsy and everybody else, but in ways of both planning, designing, and changing designs, and changing them again, and waking up in the middle of the night and realizing you have a new design that might work, and the funding mechanisms that I think would really be a great book for all of us to be able to use and to educate other communities and give conference workshops on and everything because it certainly, to me, we're at the stage we are because it's a labor of love between all of the parties, really, that are trying to meet that goal of improving certainly a major area that's important to all the communities, you know, really in central Ohio.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Mr. Slack, not to dwell too much on the technical, but could you show me the movement northbound, 270 to westbound 33? What that will be?
In Phase 1, it's going to remain on the loop ramp.
Okay.
And Phase 1 will remain on the loop ramp, and because we're eliminating the other two loop ramps, the one that conflicts up top and the other one that conflicts down below, all of that weaving and those conflict points will be eliminated in Phase 1. So that loop ramp will run smoothly.
And that's a significant improvement, certainly. But how will it be addressed as you go westbound on 33? Because I'm imagining that both staff and Councilmember Keenan shared with you, you know, the present, you know, situation is that the movement that I just described, the folks going southbound on 270 who are going westbound on that ramp to 33 essentially do not yield. You know, so tell me how the northbound person who's going to continue to use the loop ramp, if they're exiting on Avery Muirfield, how are they going to negotiate however many lanes to go over to exit?
What will happen at Avery Muirfield, if you can envision the four lanes that are coming across here, thinking left to right, the two left lanes will continue through on 33. The third lane from the left, you'll have the option to either exit off at Avery Muirfield or continue on 33. And then the right lane, you will have to exit off at Avery Muirfield. So that second lane from the right, you're going to have the option to either stay on 33 or go to Avery Muirfield. Traffic getting on at this loop ramp is only going to have to move over one lane in order to get off at Avery Muirfield.
Okay.
How about the other direction, then? Will there be a dedicated lane as you, because there are so many cars that get on at the Avery Muirfield to go east on 33, and all they want to do is get to 270. There's no weave or anything. That's the lane in the mornings that is really troublesome because you have to weave into the lane, and nobody wants to give way in the morning rush hour and in the evening, as you said.
Correct. So that right lane, the farthest right lane, will get on at Avery Muirfield, and you must exit to 270.
Right.
And keep in mind, the exit for 270 is both directions, and then it splits into the two, either north or south after that split.
So that will be much more efficient, then?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Good. Can't do it soon enough.
Yeah, looking forward to it.
Absolutely.
You know, thank you very much to ODOT. Thank you very much to certainly Morpsy, all the council members who have been involved in this, all staff who have been involved in this. You know, I don't want to be too premature. We're not to the end yet, obviously, but, you know, what's occurred in, you know, the last several months has been huge, you know, for Dublin. I think Mayor Lee makes a good point, you know, about trumpeting, you know, what's been accomplished here, you know, on behalf of everyone, you know, certainly not just the City of Dublin, but ODOT's willingness, you know, to think outside the box, if you will, a little bit, maybe a lot, I should say, you know. But we're certainly proud of Dublin's ability to make this happen. I think you would probably agree, you know, that not many communities have the wherewithal, you know, in terms of our staff as a resource and in terms of finances, you know, to be able to contribute to something like this happening. So, you know, congratulations to everybody. We're looking forward to it. It's great.
Thank you.
Really great. And thanks for coming this evening. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I could just add?
Yes, please.
All comments that have been made about the partnerships and working together, when you sit in those meetings, it truly is amazing, and you can see the difference when people are there for the reason of coming up with solutions instead of figuring out why we can't do something. And I would just like to thank Frazan and Tom for all of their efforts. They've been great to work with. And ODOT couldn't be more supportive of the efforts that the city has worked towards on this project. The same with the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission. They, their staff has been great, working with, trying to figure out how to make the project work from both an engineering and a funding standpoint, which Morpsy will be included in the funding as referenced on the chart, which is something different than they've done. So we appreciate their efforts that they're making on behalf of this project. And then also to the city staff. You mentioned the fact that our contribution includes staff as well as funding, and I think there are very few, maybe if any, other suburbs that could do what's being done just because of the staff that we have. Jeanne Willis is pretty much dedicated to this project, and when you sit in the meetings, she knows what she's doing, and it's very helpful to have her expertise involved. Tina Waskiewicz has been involved in the process, and Paul Hammersmith. So this truly is one of those enjoyable projects, and you don't mind going, sitting in meetings where sometimes the engineering issues that are being discussed, I have no idea what they're talking about, but you know you're making progress. So it truly has been an enjoyable process, and I appreciate all of the efforts that everybody has put forth in the project.
You know, I'd add Sandra Biscarczy did a great job with the communication side of this, too. There was a lot of, there was a lot of communication with political leaders, ODOT, to help with the funding side, Morpsy, with our neighbors. There was a tremendous amount of communication with Union County and some of the townships and other entities that were involved, and that was extremely helpful to it. So thank you.
Right. I think Morpsy has mentioned that they've never received the type of support and response that they have for any other projects that they've received for this one.
Well, Mr. Maud, I just want to conclude our conversation or our discussion by saying that this is truly a testament to you and your staff. You know, I haven't been involved in all the meetings that our staff has been, and some council members have been, and so forth, but the meetings that I have attended, that you have attended, and your staff has attended, the various meetings, I don't know, I recall one at OCLC, but there have been a number in recent years. And, you know, I could tell by your participation in those meetings, your work ethic, you know, the support, you know, that you gave to this project and so forth. And so, you know, I think you've shown real leadership in this, and it's truly a testament to you and your staff, and so we appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Moving on, then, to the citizen comment portion of our agenda. Please forgive me, I'm going to do my best to pronounce your name. Tim Mias? Mias? Would you come forward, please? Good evening. Thank you.
Good evening, and I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak on an event called the Race Day for Down syndrome.
Tim, I'm sorry for the interruption. Would you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure. My name is Tim Mills, and I'm the director for an event called Race Day for Down Syndrome. We don't have a formal presentation, but what I'd like to do is share a little bit about our story, and at the end of that, make an invitation, really, to the community to come out and join us. come out and join us this Thursday night, May 23rd at 7:00 PM. I'm a member of a running group called 2FGR, which stands for Two Fat Guys Running. We have one of our fat guys who's represented here today. His name is Nanda Nair. I'd like him to come to the podium with me at this time, whether he wants to or not.
With that introduction.
Nanda was one of the founding fat guys of our group and it was a little more than four years ago that Nanda, myself and two other guys, after running together for a little more than a year, decided we know enough about running to be dangerous and to start our own event, a 5K event. We had some very modest goals and they were around community, family and health. And we really wanted to promote the great things about the city of Dublin. One is they have nearly 100 miles of running paths around here. They're interconnected. And we get up as a running group and we meet at 5:29:59. We leave the recreation center every morning at that time. And so we forged a lot of tight friendships and bonds. The group is comprised of half men and half women. And so we enjoyed a lot of time and this, this group of four decided to start an event for a charity. We didn't know what that charity was going to be and we reached out to the members of our group to find out what they would be interested in supporting. And at that time, Shelley Lambert, and I'd like to ask Shelley and her son Nick to come up to the podium and join me as well. She didn't know I was going to be doing that. Shelley's son, Nick, is 10 years old and he's a, they're members of the Dublin community like myself, like Nanda, and Nick has Down Syndrome. He's a very special little boy. And Shelley introduced us to a gentleman named Lito Ramirez. At the time we were deciding to start this event, Lito had started an organization called Down Syndrome Achieves with the goal of supporting Down Syndrome Institute, which is really a, is trying to, to raise some seed money for finding, for investing in research and finding the root cause for Down Syndrome. So blood work, lab work. And I wish Lito were here to, to talk about that because he could do so much more eloquently than myself. But again, we decided to start this. We interviewed Lito and Shelley was able to introduce us to Lito and he's a member of the Dublin community. My wife is a teacher here and works with students with special needs. And so a lot of things came together for us in a very personal way. So we laid out some, some very low aspirational goals at the time and they've really blossomed. At the time, we decided we wanted to have just 150 participants and raise $5,000 to support Down Syndrome Achieves. We've done this race three years now and we've raised over $100,000 for this organization. And hopefully at this time next year, we can come back with a positive report to say that money has actually been invested in some real lab work where they're actually collecting real meaningful data to find the causes behind Down Syndrome. Our event is a 5K run and it's this Thursday night at 7:00 PM. And it's right here on Post Road. It starts and finishes at Post Road, right near Emerald Parkway. We run west all the way to Avery Muirfield. We take a quick right through Indian Run Meadows Park, which is a beautiful place to run. We've enjoyed that many times and we have a fast finish back to the finish line. We hope this year to raise $50,000 for Down Syndrome Achieves and have 1,000 participants. And the way we're tracking, I think we've got a real shot at that. And hopefully, our invitation here tonight to the community at large, we, we can really achieve those numbers. Mayor Lee, I know you don't know me, but your son Brian has actually participated in some of our events. He's a great guy. So we would like to invent, invite as many people to come out to see Dublin firsthand. We've got people from all over the city that are coming out to see this event. We have a lot of sponsors that are part of our event. Cardinal Health, who I used to work for, and we have a couple other community members, committee members I'd like to mention. Gary Zeig, if you would stand up, please. And Frizon.
Yeah.
And Tracy Lambert, you can put your phone down and stand up, please. I used to work for Cardinal Health and Tracy Lambert works for Cardinal Health and we're very proud to say Cardinal Health is our title sponsor among many sponsors. And this year, we're proud to say we're part of 10TV's Commit to Be Fit series. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Nanda, just to say a couple words about our organization, 2FGR.
Thank you. Thank you very much for this wonderful city. This group has been, has been joined together in this city and thank you for keeping all best, Jenny. Thank you for keeping all these roads, those, those so clean that we can really work and run very well. So first of all, just thank you all. That's all I wanted to say, while this time is up.
That's okay. Could you bend the mic over to Nick? I wanted to ask Nick a quick question.
Here we go.
Nick, can, can you tell us where you go to school?
Um, I don't know.
And, and do you?
Glacier. Okay, where is? MIT.
Glacier Ridge Elementary.
Very good. What grade?
Second.
No, not second. You're...
Fucking.
Third grade.
Third grade. And how old are you?
Second.
How old are you?
Nine.
You just had a birthday.
How old are you?
All right. Happy birthday, Nick.
Hey. Yay.
Nick, I know you've already been to school today and you weren't prepared to answer all these questions, but you did a good job. Thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you all very much.
One question, is there still time to sign up for your race even though it's four days away?
Yes, please. You can register online at premierraces.com. You can register in person at the Columbus Running Company store, which is right on Perimeter Loop, right near the Kroger Shopping Center. And you can register right there. You can register the day of the event as well.
Thank you.
One thing we would like to point out, too, that I think that makes our event unique is that we provide men's and women's shirts. We have a couple people modeling them for us. That's a men's shirt and a women's shirt. The kids also receive a shirt. Nick, come on up front here, please. Nick sporting our new, our kid's shirt. Every finisher will get a finisher's medal after the race. We have post-race refreshments and food from Panera Bread, CC's Pizza, Giant Eagle, Green Bean Delivery, just to name a few. And the thing that really makes this event special and community-oriented, we have a lot of inflatable bounce houses. We have face painting for the kids, balloons. I think that makes, in my estimation, we've done a number of different events and races ourselves that makes us a little bit different. And I'd like to say the best in the state of Ohio, I'll go on record as saying that, I guess I just did, is that we have a kids' run that's a 200-yard dash. And if it doesn't bring a tear to your eyes, I, I'm not sure what will. So I invite you all to come out and join us this Thursday night. Thank you very much.
Where, where are the racers going to park? Are they going to use Kaufman at school or really where are you going to?
Everywhere.
What direction?
There are a number of different places to park. There's a field that's right along Post Road as you're moving eastbound on Post Road, past the Recreation Center. And there's a field right there near the entrance to the Recreation Center. There's parking at Delta Energy, which is one of our sponsors this year. There's parking available at the Dublin Rec Center along Tara Hill. And we've also worked with Dublin City Schools, I failed to mention, but we partner with them and we advertise at all 19 schools and Dublin City Schools. We get a fantastic turnout from Dublin City Schools. So plenty of parking options and Cardinal Health as well.
Thank you.
Great, great. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
All right.
All right. Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Next up is Mr. Wallace Mauer.
Your honor and members of council and members of city staff. I don't know how many of you had a, I don't know how many of you have had a chance to see the current display at Dublin Arts Council. Who, by the way, you remember had a Down's, but this display backed quite a ways, which demonstrates tremendous concentration of desire inside of Down Syndrome people. At any rate, the display there is called Subrural. It's a play on the word, especially the word part "sub." It's subrural, lower than rural. The "sub" means something higher, better than, say, urban, et cetera, et cetera. When I got there, I went straight to one of the presenters and said, who's winning? What side is winning? He said, what do you mean? And I said, between the ugly and the beautiful. And he said, what's your profession? But before I was able to answer, I was drawn away. And actually, I don't really want to talk about that tonight. This is what I want to talk about. While I was there, I ran into Councilmember Boring, who I said, hey, you know, I've resigned from council. I'm retiring, retiring from council. I'm not running again. And I said, yeah, I saw that in the papers. And she said, you know, there are several council members that are up for reelection. I said, yeah, I saw that in the papers, too. And I said, hey, you know what I see between this podium and those chairs up there? I see an open door. And the question is, you going to walk through it? I got your attention right off that paper. And I decided after 10 or 15 minutes, no, I'm not going to walk through it. A, I don't have the time to do a conscientious job the way I've seen you all up here do it, hours and days. I'm too busy writing and musician is a writer and a musician. And I prefer to keep the function, which I'll return to after I've finished my concerts. And that is the function which is not exercised to the detriment of the country enough, and that is citizen participation. My goal in that would be to try to get half a dozen more people up here with differing interests and pressure points. So that's what I would like to go back to once I finish the concerts. You know, Madison and Jefferson and Washington long ago warned the country not to get into the party mode because it reduces all discussion and all arguments to empty, name-calling, sloganeering. Now, that doesn't quite happen on the local level, certainly not on this level, but that's what I would like to go back to once I get done with the, you know. So it's good to be here again, I think. And I, you know, not that I wouldn't have an agenda if I ran. I'd be running into one, six votes all the time. But, no. I got 50 seconds left and I'll donate them to, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Moving forward then with our consent agenda, we have 10 items listed on this evening's consent agenda. I would ask council members whether they want to remove any items from this evening's consent agenda. Hearing none, I would move that we approve the actions for the 10 items listed on the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Leckleider?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the second reading of ordinances, beginning with ordinance 35-13.
Accepting the dedication of a 0.167 acre with 0.167 acres as present mode occupied more or less, fee simple interest in a 0.047 acre more or less, permanent multi-use utility, grading and drainage easement from the Washington Township Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Ms. Oat, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. These acquisitions from Washington Township are being donated by the township to the city for the furtherance of our capital improvement program for transportation improvements. One is for the installation of bike path along Brand Road. The other is for the installation of a eastbound turn lane, I'm sorry, going northbound on Riverside Drive to eastbound to make a right turn at the fire station at Hard Road. Did I say that right?
Yeah.
I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? And the construction on the right turn lane that you just mentioned on Riverside, that's to occur this summer?
We're currently evaluating what it'll be this year or next year.
Okay. All right. All right, very good. Are there no other questions? Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Thank you. Ordinance 37-13.
Establishing the location and amount of cash on hand for change funds.
Thank you. Ms. Muller.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. As outlined in your staff memo, we are requesting a change to our change funds. We are requesting that the Dublin Recreation Center get changed from $450 to $650 and that each pools change fund gets changed from $600 to $800. We believe that this will not only improve our staff's safety and that their trips to outside businesses to make change throughout the course of the weekend will be reduced, but also improve our customer service to our residents and patrons of those locations so that they don't have to wait for change to be made. Similarly, in our review of this, we did, are making the recommendation to combine the change fund that is located within the accounting and auditing division as well as income tax into one generic finance department change fund.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, Anne, if you call for the vote.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mayor Leckleider?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Janice Zerker?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
So it was 3.345 million in the original and the amended is 3.327 million dollars so that it's fully aligned now with the values that emerged from the final appraisal based on final surveys. And again, the reason rationale for the emergency language this evening is this property is slated to close on June 10th and cannot have any extension beyond the 11th, so requesting emergency action. Be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Okay. The agenda does not indicate a motion for emergency. Do we need that?
I'm sorry, it doesn't. You're right.
Okay. Well, would someone like to make a motion of that effect? Second?
Second.
All right. Anne, if you call for a vote on the.
Mayor Leckleider, Mrs. Boring, Vice Mayor Saleh, Mr. Reiner, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Keenan, Ms. Janice Zerker.
Right, on the ordinance.
Mr. Gerber, Mayor Leckleider, Mrs. Boring, Vice Mayor Saleh, Mr. Reiner, Ms. Janice Zerker and Mr. Keenan.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Ordinance thirty-nine dash thirteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a development and tax increment financing agreement for able landholding Dublin LLC related to development of approximately 6.15 acres of real estate generally located at the east of Riverside Drive, west of Teller Ridge Drive and south and adjacent to Teller Road.
Great, thank you. Ms. McDaniel.
Yes, the applicant's attorney called me today and asked if this could be tabled to the next meeting.
Okay. Anything more we need to know?
Nope.
Okay. Enough said then. Somebody like to make a motion of that effect?
Motion to table ordinance forty-five thirteen into the next council meeting.
Thank you. Was that correct, Dana, that just to the next council meeting? Okay, great, thank you. Anne, if you call for a vote, please.
Mr. Reiner, Mayor Leckleider, Mrs. Boring, Vice Mayor Saleh, Ms. Janice Zerker, Mr. Keenan, Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Moving on to the first reading of ordinances, beginning with ordinance forty-five dash thirteen.
Authorizing provision of certain incentives to JP Morgan Chase Bank to induce it to locate an office and associated operations and workforce within the city authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. Giger.
Good evening. We have been working with JP Morgan Chase. We were actually down at the state today. They did receive approval for a fifteen-year, 75% job creation tax credit from the state of Ohio. And we have been working with them about a local incentive. So what is proposed, which will be for a vote on June 10th when the company is present, is a two-year performance incentive of 15%, which is renewable if they renew their lease. So two, three-year leases and then there's also a $40,000 location grant. For 500 jobs, average wage is $50,000.
Mr. Keenan?
No, nothing.
Anyone?
No. Well, I would just like to congratulate Colleen and Dana and Marsha. This is a great opportunity for, again, for us, as you were quoted in the paper, to diversify our corporate base. And obviously JP Morgan Chase is, I think, the largest in, well, no, Cardinal's the largest, I guess, in Ohio, but certainly the largest locally. And we are certainly pleased to have them consider moving into our community.
It is exciting. Their Polaris location is over a million square feet, so it's pretty enormous. And they're very near capacity there. So it's very exciting to know that the building that they're moving to, 165,000 square feet on Parkwood, it hasn't been empty very long, but there will be a single tenant in that and quickly fill it. So our hope is that through these incentives, they just continue to grow in Dublin.
And I think they'll like the access here. I've talked to some employees that work up in Polaris and access, you know, both in the morning and the evening is pretty rough. So anyway, hopefully the employees, the first 500 that come here will spread the word and be able to exert some influence. Just a quick question. The 3.1 million in income tax that we would expect to realize over the course of this agreement, is that over the six-year term?
It is.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. All right. And we'll have the second reading.
On June 10th and company representatives will be here as well.
Great. Look forward to it. Mr. Keenan.
I just wanted to correct. I think that what I heard on the tape, if we need to do that, Anne, when she gets remit. The motion earlier on thirty-nine thirteen was referred to as forty-five thirteen. So I just wanted to make that correction. Whatever.
She can hear you on the tape.
That's fine. That's all.
Did I introduce it as forty-five thirteen?
No, I think Jamie did. This was the introduction on forty-five. Yeah, unless there's any confusion, I thought we should at least make note of it right now.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I heard, anyway.
Okay.
Okay. We will hear that at the next meeting. Correct?
Right.
I just introduced this as forty-five thirteen, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
But Mike is saying that.
The earlier ordinance was introduced as forty-five thirteen. Or at least it was referred to as forty-five thirteen in the vote.
We'll get it right.
It's not a big deal. It'll be on the tape.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to the introduction of our resolutions, beginning with resolution twenty-four dash thirteen.
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative right-of-way acquisition agreement with the city of Columbus for arterial street rehabilitation.
Thank you. Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Mr. Hammer Smith.
Mayor and members of council staff is pleased and excited to bring to you this evening the opportunity to enter into another collaborative partnership with the city of Columbus. And this time, we are referring to the Hard Road Sawmill Road intersection improvement that we are marrying up with Columbus's last phase of improving Hard Road. And that last phase being from Sawmill Road to Smoky Road Road. Columbus's project includes widening the road to four lanes, adding bike lanes and making other improvements within that corridor. And as you know, for many years, we've planned the improvement of the Sawmill Hard intersection in conjunction with the development of Lifetime Fitness and the Kroger Shopping Center. We really thought it made a lot of sense to bring these two projects together, create one project that would be jointly managed and jointly constructed. To that end, we bring before you to this evening a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a cooperative right-of-way and acquisition agreement with the city of Columbus whereby the city of Columbus would take the lead in acquiring right-of-way from three properties along the east side of Sawmill Road as shown on the slide before you. Columbus has approximately eighty parcels to acquire right-of-way along Hard Road for their project and it really just made sense for them to take the lead on all this right-of-way acquisition within their jurisdiction. The city of Dublin will remain engaged in taking the lead on acquiring right-of-way from a few properties along the west side of Sawmill Road that will be necessary for the intersection improvement. With this, we are being asked by the city of Columbus to advance them $135,000. Approximately $114,000 of that is the right-of-way cost. And then we also have appraisal fees, our appraisal cost, title fees, and then they've asked for some administrative costs for their legal staff to lead this initiative, which we think is really in our best interest to do. The current plan is to advertise this project for bid in the fall of next year and advance construction at the end of '14 and do the line share of the construction in 2015. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions or comments?
If I could, must, might want to clarify here. So under Article II, the acquisition of the right-of-way, the $135,000 that we're being requested this evening is for the purchase of property that resides in Columbus?
Correct.
So could you point out on the map what that is?
Yeah, that would be the CVS retail store at the northeast corner of the Sawmill Hard Intersection, Society Bank, and then also there's a retail center just behind Society Bank on the southeast corner of the intersection. And this right-of-way is necessary for the, you know, our, the Dublin's proposed improvement of the intersection. It's not necessarily needed for the Hard Road improvement itself. It's because we've desired to improve the intersection.
And is a portion of the intersection in Columbus as well?
Yes, actually, the majority of the intersection is within Columbus. So the green line you see on the exhibit is actually representative of the corporation line between Dublin and Columbus, Dublin to the west, Columbus to the east.
So even though they were taking the rest of Hard Road into the four lanes, that I know further east is fabulous, actually, to drive. So it'll be great to have the rest of it finished. But along with that, they weren't intending to improve the intersection?
No, they weren't at that time. And one of the reasons is, is that they knew that we had our project on the books since basically 2005 and that we had actually, being aware that they were advancing their project, slowed our project to marry up to two, thinking it was a good idea. So that really our project essentially came first and really needs the right-of-way much more than their project would at the intersection.
Are they making a contribution to the center there?
To the center.
Well, where you're saying that.
Intersection.
The intersection.
We haven't necessarily, there will be, I guess, coming before you, a construction agreement at a later date where we talk about how we're going to marry up the two projects and share construction cost. But no, initially, we really segregated out our project, which again has been longstanding as far as we will pay through our TIF districts, the improvement of the intersection. And again, just in advance, I guess, the intersection is where their project will terminate.
Will this be re-signaled?
Yes, it'll be a signalized intersection with dual lefts on each lane.
There's significant cost in the signalization. Are they going to contribute to that?
As I said before, the intersection improvement has always been our improvement. So no, they've not offered to contribute to the intersection improvement.
This doesn't seem right. We're all sharing the signals. I understand that we want the intersection larger and the right-of-way piece on that, but it doesn't seem, doesn't hardly seem fair that we don't share in the signalization.
What caused the improvement of the intersection is predominantly, or, you know, a great majority of it was the development of both Lifetime Fitness and the Kroger Retail Center is what drove our improvement of the intersection. So it was development within Dublin.
So Sawmill Road had nothing to do with it?
Well, I don't think it said that, but what really helped push it over the edge when we did the traffic studies, the traffic impact studies for these two developments, that really caused the need for particularly the dual lefts.
So if we're doing the intersection and we're doing the lights, can we get rid of the photo enforcement?
I guess you could make that request to the city of Columbus if you.
I think we ought to.
So wish.
Because that's just another headache in that area.
Is there photo enforcement at this interchange?
On one leg, it's on the.
On Sawmill.
Yep.
Yeah. Northbound Sawmill Road.
They get all the income from that.
Exactly.
They could probably pay for it after the fines that are coming off of that thing.
Paul, what's the improvements on Sawmill? Are they adding a lane?
No, actually, dual left turn lanes on each of the legs and with the addition of, I think, a southbound right turn, dedicated right turn lane onto Hard Road.
And the request that we contribute to their administrative slash legal cost?
Yeah, if we would do the acquisition on our own, we would have legal fees involved with our own law department to do that.
Well, and actually, as far as legal fees, until it gets to eminent domain process, it would be covered under our contract and the retainer. But it's typical, Columbus on all of their projects, they charge back themselves legal fees, so it's a matter of where the money is coming from. So this is part of what they do on all of their projects for both legal fees as well as when there's inspection and administration fees.
Was this part of our agreement on the project, Emerald Parkway?
Emerald Parkway widening. We paid them an administrative fee to manage the construction. If you recall, we actually, on the acquisitions in Dublin, our staff took care of those acquisitions within Dublin.
And a big difference between that project and this project with regard to the right-of-way acquisition, in Emerald widening, they were parcels within the city of Dublin and parcels that we needed. This project, the parcels are in the city of Columbus and we needed a piece for our project and they needed another piece for their project from the same property owner. So instead of us going to the same three property owners getting right-of-way and easements and then Columbus going back and doing the same thing, we felt that it made sense to have one party going to the three property owners to obtain what we needed for both projects.
I guess I'm trying to be persuaded. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I, and that costs $135,000? Well, the majority of it is the actual cost of the right-of-way, $114,000, I believe Paul said. So based on appraisals. And then the $135, if it's anything less than that as it comes in, then that will be remitted back to the city of Dublin.
As part of our traffic studies, have we ever done an analysis, I don't even know if it's possible, of how many Dublin residents are using this intersection versus Columbus and other residents?
Well, no, because that would really require stopping the motorists and doing what we call an origin and destination study to understand where they're located at as they go through the intersection or to do a license plate. License plate survey. It has been done, but no, it hasn't been part of those impact studies.
I mean, what's our belief? What's our?
I really don't have any estimate to venture. I just.
I think it's an example, though, of a lot of things. But the one that I might lift up is that our school district, of course, is really who's impacted by this intersection more than anything else. And as you know, we have a number of schools that are even in Columbus, but, you know, are operated under the Dublin City Schools. And of course, we have a high school right here that is drawing from the east side of Sawmill Road coming through that intersection. So, you know, I think that in that respect, that is really how, you know, Dublin is really impacted significantly by this intersection. As well as people coming, I mean, I think one of the Emerald Parkway completions is because we know we are bringing in people to work in Dublin that are coming through Hard Road and picking up ultimately Emerald Parkway to come into Cardinal Health and other kinds of companies. I just must say, though, that, you know, it seems like every time that we want to get into a project, and we're always in situations, so many times we are, not always, but so many times we are in situations where it's dual jurisdictions. And it seems as though, it feels like Dublin is always the one being asked to pay for, you know, 100% or close to that of these kind of requirements. And it seems like, that seems a little unfair, really. And yet, we want the project to be completed. And so that's how we always end up needing to vote in favor of this kind of a relationship with another jurisdiction. And I don't know how to get around that, but it concerns me that I don't see the sort of relationship going both directions, I guess, in other, you know, in former things that we've had to deal with, mostly in transportation areas, and now this one this evening.
Well, and the other thing to highlight on this project as part of the Kroger Center development and the Lifetime Fitness development, they were required to contribute toward this intersection improvement. And we established the TIF district for both of those projects. So there were going to be intersection improvements that were required, that we required as part of their development. And like Paul said, we basically slowed down our project to match up with this project. And I know the other project that we discussed a couple of years ago, the Emerald widening, and there was conversation about the city making additional contribution for some right-of-way costs or potential right-of-way costs. And based upon the construction contract that was awarded, and I think we put in one of our follow-up memos to council, is that that never did need to occur and that the additional contributions weren't made. So on the Emerald widening, I think we paid our share, they paid their share. And I, the rest of the traffic signals along Sawmill Road, or a good part of them, Columbus maintained. We do have some that we share and some costs on maintenance that the agreement was entered into when Dublin Village Center was constructed. So there are instances where we have agreed to partner with the city of Columbus or other entities to ensure that the projects get done as efficiently as we think they can be.
We have another one that we've talked about for many years, I think includes part of Columbus, and that's Glick and Dublin Road. And we'll probably be in the same boat there. Don't they have a piece of that?
No, that's actually Shawnee Hills.
Oh, I thought Columbus had a piece because of the dam.
They actually, several years ago, Shawnee Hills took over jurisdiction of that right-of-way at Glick Road, east of the intersection.
Well, just let me add that I'm still interested in that particular project and I know you're making great strides in that area.
So is Mr. Reiner, as he reminded me this evening before the meeting.
You know, I think Mary Lee makes a very good point about the high school because anybody that's been there at those times know how badly the traffic is. But I think what it also demonstrates to toot our own horn is that we care so much about our citizens being able to manage through. We've just had the ODOT presentation tonight. We have this. We have the Emerald Parkway. And yes, you know, the Shawnee Hills area, I'm sure we're going to do for our residents. So it doesn't seem fair, but I think it's one more chance to point out that we care so much about having our community right, that we will go to this length. That's a good point.
Well, I appreciate Mary Lee's comments. That helps to persuade me not only with respect to the schools, but to, you know, the extent to which it benefits Dublin commerce. You know, that's, I had not thought of that, so I appreciate those comments. I don't know whether this is related or not, but I just happened to notice, you know, on Saturday, a little afternoon, eastbound traffic on Sawmill Road at this single-point urban interchange that we contributed so many millions of dollars to. I mean, it's failing. I mean, that's not news to anybody, I understand that. You know, because, you know, that movement, you know, is going northbound.
Right.
You know, to this area. I mean, is there any way that that is ever going to improve?
Actually, the answer to that question is yes. Starting really last September, ODOT initiated a discussion down. initiated a discussion down at ODOT Central Office about a project to improve that situation. And they actually call it, they've got a name for it called Project Ramp Clear. And the goal of the project is to widen Sawmill going northbound in order to relieve the off, the off-ramp from 270 to Sawmill Road northbound. And they are currently working on that project. In fact, part of the discussion was, again, trying to figure out how to marry that now up with our two projects in Dublin and Columbus. So yes, it is being looked at.
Because that interchange seems to work reasonably well, given the volume, in every other direction. Am I right?
Right. But it's really during those peak periods, Saturdays and the PM peak, that that off-ramp movement really starts to break down. Congestion occurs at both Billingsley and the roads further north. So they're making a conscious effort to try and figure out how to solve that.
Is part of it a synchronization issue?
It's a lot of various movements. A lot of it's just limited stacking within there, particularly at Billingsley. In an ideal world, you would restrict the movements at Billingsley, but there aren't good avenues for those folks to go elsewhere.
What would be the time for that develop, by any chance? Would you know?
The ODOT project? We haven't been given a timeframe, but I can tell you that they're trying to move it along quickly. They're trying to minimize right-of-way costs. If you've been over along Sawmill Road, you know Jermaine Ford has been improving their dealership there. So they're also trying to take a look at how to work it in with their site development.
There's a lot of cross-lane exchanges there.
Yeah.
At the rush hour.
A lot of weaving that takes place.
And one reason this might be a good idea to go ahead with this is because really our northbound traffic really is turning left on hard. Because, one, the snow's removed and you want to get out of any Columbus jurisdiction as fast as you can in the wintertime. And that's the fastest way to get out of Dublin, get into Dublin. On Mike's comment, tonight we had a conversation on the question you just brought up, 7:45 in Glick. And you know, and I don't, and Paul's going to ask the mayor of Shawnee Hills if we could possibly do this through a no-left turn, because the other evening at 6:30, it was backed up for 250 yards on that road. It was an abomination. And you know, there's a few people going up to El Barcaro or heading north. So what you do is you go through and you do what we did at Dale Drive. They go down to Shawnee. And I think the name of the road by the boat store is Shawnee Chase Shawnee something. They turn left and then go back through there and then go north. Could be a temporary solution. The other solution, and everybody, and I hate to say this, I mean, if you want to make some money and you're police officers, everybody tries to get around the cars trying to go left there. So they're all committing a legal maneuver to go around there and then continue over the bridge. And I mean, it's one car after another. And another temporary solution, we've talked about this in the past, is try and put in a small section of at least two cars of asphalt on the right-hand side of that pad going east, so they can at least get around the left-hand turn cars. But it's the left-hand turn cars going north that's causing all the trouble, backing them up, because it's a one-lane road. Absolute mess. You can sit there for 15 minutes trying to get through that intersection. So he's going to try to contact the mayor of Shawnee Hills and ask him, see what happens.
Yeah, let me clarify. It's first a question of the Ohio Department of Transportation because it is their intersection. So we're going to start with that question, but I don't want to raise any false hopes on that solution.
Well, thank you, Paul, and how we do digress, myself included. Okay, if there's no other discussion, and if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh, Mayor Leclerc Leiter.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker, Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes, reluctantly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Resolution 26-13.
Appointing members to the Architectural Review Board of the City of Dublin.
Ms. Saleh.
The council met as a whole and interviewed candidates for the Architectural Review Board. At this point, I would like to move that we appoint Neil Mathias to a three-year term on the Architectural Review Board and Tom Munhill to a one-year term on our Architectural Review Board.
I'll second that. Thank you. If there's no discussion, and if you call for the vote, please.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes. Is it a one-year term or an expired?
It's completing the unexpired term.
I'm sorry. Thank you. It is completing the unexpired term.
It's one year.
It's on the resolution.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring, Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc Leiter.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Resolution 27-13.
Intend to appropriate a 0.210 acre more or less fee simple interest, of which 0.203 acres more or less is present road occupied, and a 0.015 acre more or less temporary construction easement from Dennis W. Richardson.
Introduction, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you. Ms. I.
Good evening. Staff has been in negotiations with several property owners for improvements to acquire right-of-way and easements for improvements at the intersection of Kaufman and Brand Roads. After discussions with this particular property owner, we believe it's appropriate and staff recommends moving forward with an intent to appropriate should become necessary to acquire property necessary for the improvement. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any discussion?
Are we on target for construction this year?
We're shooting for it. I get reminded every day by our engineering staff what my deadline is.
No pressure. And if you call for the vote, please.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc Leiter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes. Thank you. Resolution 28-13.
Waiving competitive bidding requirements for the purchase of beer for the 2013 Dublin Irish Festival.
Introduction.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and members of council. I bring to you a resolution waiving the competitive bidding process to purchase beer from Superior Beverage for the Dublin Irish Festival for this year.
Questions or comments?
I am thrilled to see that Guinness is arriving.
Yes, for the first time in 26 years.
How can you have an Irish festival not have Guinness?
Well, actually, we have been talking to Guinness for a couple years. And last year, the former distributor who had Guinness went out of business and Superior Beverage, who's been our distributor since the beginning of Irish Festival, they picked up the rights to distribute Guinness. So luckily, they were able to work out a deal so we could have both beverages, still have the Miller Coors products, but also have Guinness at the festival.
It's really exciting. Thank you. It'll be interesting to see the percentages one to the other.
Yes.
Allison, I know Amy brought this up maybe at the last meeting, and I understand this, but once again, I had a couple citizens that I wasn't expecting to approach me about the same concern that Amy had about underage drinking. And I know we put out the, what the police are going to do and all, but I would like to bring that up once more because of the citizens that are saying, wow.
If I could just add to that, not just underage drinking, you know, legal age drinking as well?
We are kind of working on something that's new this year. One of the things we noticed last year is that we actually saw a lot of that early teenage group kind of gathering. So we're trying to work on a project this year that we can sort of target that group so we get them more involved with the festival at an earlier age. Sometimes when you get to the high school age, it's a little harder if you haven't caught them earlier. So we're really going to be focusing on that middle school arena and kind of questioning them, what do they want, whether it's music, whether it's, we've looked at an electronic graffiti wall, things like that, to get them more involved in that nighttime, that 10 to midnight time, when they don't have anything else to do necessarily. And we are working again with the police department, I think Haines is here as well, to focus on our Operation 21. And I know he's going to be using the, you're using the newly trained citizen force with that too, right?
Yeah, we'll be using the citizen, the community resource, or I'm sorry, community service officers as well.
Is that, is that just aimed at the underage drinking?
The Operation 21 is primarily aimed at underage drinking, but we encourage them to be on the lookout for anything that has to do with any type of alcohol abuse or any violation of alcohol laws. That's, our training gives them the things to look for and that type of thing. And that's when they bring us in and get us involved. So, I mean, primarily we're looking at underage, but they're there to help us enforce all the alcohol-related laws.
I think in the past, what I've heard and what I've observed is not so much that underage folks are being served at our festival. I think that the people that are in charge of selling the beverage tokens and the people that are pouring are well-trained and that's not the issue. The issue is underage folks drinking off-site and going to the festival. And then also the folks that are over-consuming while they are at the festival. And if you're there on a Friday or Saturday evening, you can just walk through and see lots of folks that, you know, you kind of worry about.
Well, and one thing we've found is, you're right, our alcohol servers have got a great record. And we've actually, over the last 10 years, I can't really think of more than maybe one or two situations where we've even had a hint of a problem with the servers. We have seen problems with underage people bringing alcohol in and adults bringing alcohol in. Now, we don't frisk people. We don't pat them down, that type of thing. So that's going to remain a possibility. But we do, obviously, our bag checkers, the private security we use at the gates are trained to watch for that. And they find a lot of it, but not 100%.
So I'm imagining that some of these adults that I witness every year, and I have a distinct memory of a few last year, and I'm just one person, you know, that they're either coming to the festival halfway inebriated or somebody else is purchasing alcohol for them, because I'm really hoping that our servers are not serving these individuals.
No, and we do spot checks of that. And in fact, we actually have private security, we've been, most recent years, at our busiest beer tents, we actually have private security at the beer tents. And then one of the things they're watching for is that type of thing. And unfortunately, what happens sometimes is someone is buying a drink, you know, we have a limit of two, but you know, that can happen. Someone will go buy the drink for someone and they do consume too much, and that happens. You know, we try to emphasize personal responsibility and making sure people are trying to, you know, are watching out for themselves and the people they're with. And really, for a festival this size, we have very, very few issues.
You know, that's my observation too, chief. I'm surprised with the thousands of people there, that there are so few issues.
And I, and I mean, I agree.
Compared to all the other festivals you might attend in this community or Greater Columbus or other places, this is really a well-run, orderly, if they're going to consume alcohol, well-consumed, without alternative problems production. I mean, it really is.
Well, I mean, I've got to hand it to the event staff. They do a great job training their people. Our alcohol servers are well-trained. They know what they're doing. And I got to hand it to our staff. We've got, you know, experienced people who are diplomatic, you know, when we need to enforce the law, we enforce the law. When we need to, when we need to use a softer hand, when there's not really a violation of the law, but maybe someone needs to be steered in the right direction, we do that too.
Yeah, I agree with Tim and Amy. I think when we have problems, I think with the youth, they've come in either drinking off-site or partly potted out off-site and then come in.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we found.
Will we have this cab program?
Yeah, the Safe Ride program. And what we found, we had them, a couple years, we've had them at our beverage server station in our info booths. We found really the best people to give them out are the people working the entrances, because they're watching everyone who walks out to make sure they don't walk out with a beer. But so if they see somebody, they will hand them the Safe Ride coupons as they walk out. So that's really been our main form of getting those coupons out to people.
And, excuse me, just a follow-up. And does our, does our program include some emphasis regarding designated drivers?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. Amy?
Are those Safe Ride coupons used?
Yeah, and I can't remember. We had a report, and I don't have it in front of me, the exact number that were used at Irish Festival last year. Do you remember?
Sandra's office has done pretty, they've been liaison, liaising with that group and they...
I think it was in your memo, the last memo, I think you knew those numbers.
Yeah, she's better versed on the statistics.
We didn't have as many used as we would like, but there's an education process. So you always learn from a festival. But this year, the Memorial Tournament is going to be using Safe Ride, the President's Cup and Irish Festival. So even having more events within Dublin use those coupons will help each other that way. So, yeah.
Great. Well, certainly appreciate everyone's efforts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And if you call for the vote, please.
Mr. Gerber.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Mayor Leclerc Leiter.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan.
Yes.
Ms. Janice Zerker.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to other, and I see Mr. Goodwin at the podium. We have a tree replacement fee waiver request. Whenever you're ready.
Good evening. This waiver request is associated with a $32,000 square foot expansion of the Nestle Quality Assurance Center at 6625 Uterman Road. Council may recall that in 2012, Nestle acquired approximately nine acres of land to the west of their existing property from the city of Dublin to facilitate this planned expansion. And they have now proceeded with a development plan to expand that facility. This site is located in the West Innovation District and all development plan or site plan modifications are subject to review and approval by the Administrative Review Team. And this expansion of the facility has recently obtained approval by the Administrative Review Team contingent upon receiving a waiver request for tree replacements from city council. There are two tree rows to the west of the existing facility and portions of the site to the north, primarily along the South Fork of the Indian Run are heavily wooded as well, making tree removal difficult to avoid. The applicant has worked with staff through the development plan review process to locate additional locations on the site where some tree replacements could be provided. And we're happy with the amount of trees that they've been able to locate with their development plan. And I do have a copy of the development plan, if you'd like to actually see that and review it. The applicant has requested, however, a waiver because it is impractical to replace all of the inches that need to be removed on the site. So what they're requesting is a waiver consistent with council's typical waiver policy. Council may recall, the city council in 2001 adopted a tree fee waiver policy that would permit in certain conditions modifying the tree replacement requirement from an inch per inch replacement to a tree per tree replacement for non-landmark trees. And that's what the applicant is proposing today. And the applicant is also here to answer any questions as well.
I just have a question. The trees, and I'm sure a lot of these trees are hackberries and mulberries that are growing up along the creek. But I guess I don't understand, is the facility going to come so close to the Indian Run Creek?
No, it's actually, the facility is moving to the west of the existing facility. However, one of the applicant's objectives with this, this site expansion is to separate heavy truck traffic from employee traffic. And that includes a new driveway that will ring the north portion of the site, north of the existing stormwater pond. There are some trees that are not immediately along the South Fork of the Indian Run, but located in that portion of the site. And that mass of trees is impacted by that new drive aisle. The new parking area and the actual facility expansion itself are impacting a tree row to the west of the existing facility.
I'm curious if any of the trees that are impacted, are they ash trees? And if so, do we, do we subtract those from the net-net?
We would normally, but I don't believe any of these actually are ash trees.
That would be a policy now with respect to ash?
Right. I believe, well, to clarify, I believe one of the landmark trees that is being removed is an ash tree, but because it is already either in very poor condition or dead, we wouldn't count that.
Good. Thank you.
Would the representative here from the request or the applicant like to come forward or not? Why don't you just come on up and say hello? You've sat here all evening. If you'd state your names and addresses for the record, please.
My name is Rick Schwant. I'm a facility engineer at the Quality Assurance Center in Dublin.
Chris Harmon, Senior Vice President with Hickson. We're the design firm from Cincinnati.
Okay. Any comments that you'd like to make?
No, I think everything has been submitted through the Administrative Review Team and should be so stated.
I'll just say we're excited about the project. And I, as Justin has pointed out, we think we have an excellent landscape plan that's maximized the potential use of or fill-in of trees in a practical way. And we just ask for your approval for this waiver.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And if you call for the vote, please. Or I'm sorry, we need a motion.
I'll send approval.
And if you call for the vote, please.
Mayor Leclerc Leiter.
Yes.
Mrs. Boring.
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Nisi Zerker?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Council.
I'd like to ask staff, perhaps, I had raised this at Roundtable a couple of months ago, about the tree replacement, and sort of quantifying it, and I'm wondering if there might be a compromise in the future. You know, we're doing the inch-for-inch, and asking them to pay 42,750. You know, perhaps we could round up, make it an even 50,000. This is just for an example, not this particular thing. But I'm thinking that that way, we get some extra trees to plant someplace else, because as, you know, a couple of different commissions have pointed out, we're losing a lot of ash trees, there are other, you know, diseases on the horizon, and we're going to be in a position where we need to replace trees, not necessarily onsite, but also off-site, and having some extra funds in the tree replacement fund would be helpful for the future, so we can stay as treed as we are. There's an awful lot of ash trees that are unfortunately mature and coming down. So I, you know, just as an idea of some way to enrich that fund, and, you know, we want to be fair to our applicants, but also make sure that we're staying true to our policy of, you know, having lots of trees and being a green community, and requiring that our trees be replaced.
We'll take a look to see if there's any adjustment that should be made, and, you know, in this case, and most of the others, as long as they've complied with making, saving as many trees as they possibly can, then that's when the waiver's recommended. But we'll take a look and see if there's something else that we can modify.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Justin. Next up, approval of alcohol sales in Coffin Park for the Dublin Irish Festival, and aren't you glad we had that discussion already?
I'll be happy to answer any questions about this one, but this is just the memo to request the waiving to let us serve alcohol in the park during the festival.
Questions and comments? Hearing none. Somebody want to make a motion to approve the waiver?
I'll move. Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Anne, if you call for the vote, please.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, any staff comments?
Yes, three items. The draft city council goals were included in your packet, so if there are any comments or any feedback on those, please let us know between now and the next deadline for the packet, and we'll provide the resolution in the next council packet, so you can contact me, or Sarah, or Anne, and we'll get any of your comments included. The second item is, there was a memo that was placed at your desk this evening that Terry had written to me with regard to the Bridge Street District and the River Corridor improvements, and the, an item that we had talked about, working with the consultants to finalize the scope to advance the preliminary engineering and design. So if you have any questions or follow-up on that, just please let us know, call either Terry or me, and we can follow up and provide any information on that. And then, the third item, I don't know if he's still in here, he probably went out with the Nestle folks, I was looking for Dana. We have an item to share, but I want to wait until Dana gets back in the room.
Okay.
So that's it.
Well, in the meantime, I'll take care of just one piece of business. I'd like to offer a motion with respect to our law director, Stephen J. Smith, who, at the end of this week, effective May 25, 2013, will be joining the law firm of Frost Brown Todd. And his present employer has agreed to waive 30-day termination provision in the existing professional services agreement between us, the city of Dublin, and Mr. Smith's present employer. And so, in accordance with the charter and the city manager's recommendation, I would move that the present contract be amended to substitute the law firm Frost Brown Todd LLC under the same terms and provisions containing the existing contract with Ice Miller LLP. And additionally, I would move the staff, that staff, be direct to provide counsel with legislation confirming the actions set forth in this motion at our next meeting. Is there a second?
I'll second him.
Thank you. Anne, if you call for the vote?
Mr. Nisi Zerker?
Yes.
Mrs. Boring?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Gerber?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Back to you, Marcia.
Okay, Dana's back in the room, so we'll make the announcement. Dana informed me a week, maybe, a few days ago, anyway, the Intelligent Community Forum has notified him to give him a lifetime achievement award, and he will be going to New York in early June to accept that award. So just wanted to make that announcement, and to congratulate him. I think Dana's done a lot of hard work over the years on this initiative, and this recognition is well-deserved, and reflects not only very highly on Dana, but also on the city of Dublin.
It does. Dana, why don't you come forward, say a few words? Practice your acceptance speech on us.
I appreciate that Marcia brought that up, and I get about talking about myself, so I won't do that. But I was pretty shocked to get the phone call from Lou Zacharella, it's the Co-Founder Award, they call it, it's given by the three co-founders. You've met two of them, Lou Zacharella, John Jung, who did the site assessment when we were vying for top seven, and then, of course, Robert Bell, who's the third co-founder. And this is the third time they've given this award in their history, and so it's a pretty big honor, I'm very humbled to get it, and it really is because, it's really not about me, it's about the team, it's about, you're enabling me, and enabling us to do this thing called Dublink, and, you know, I know that the city's really bought into the Intelligent Community concept, and really trying to promote knowledge cities around the world. This is a global initiative, and the Intelligent Community Forum publishes papers, and does studies, and does research, and all that sort of thing, and we are actually touted around the world, probably more than you ever know, about our, being a knowledge community, intelligent community, as they call it. So, anyway, it's a great honor, and I really will go there to New York, accepting that, really, not for me, but on behalf of the city of Dublin. So I know that it, that weren't few of you all supporting that initiative many years ago, and in my partner with Greg Dunn, and Pete Patton, and Official Company, and all those folks who got that initiative off the ground early on, it's really recognition of that team, so, but thank you for that recognition, I appreciate it.
Well, that's great, congratulations.
Marcia, do we know who the top seven are this year yet? Dana, do we know who the top seven are this year yet?
Who the top seven, they'll announce that at the conference.
Yeah, this, this, this award will be given at the same luncheon that they announced the number one.
Well, what are the, who are the top seven?
I don't know all of them offhand. Columbus is one that's vying. I don't know all the other ones offhand. I should, but I don't. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Come on, that's it? Great. Amy, we're going to lead off with you, and then we'll come back to you if you like. I think you have some recommendations to make.
I do, I do. This evening, the Administrative Committee of the whole met, and with a candidate for CSAC, so we would have a seven-member commission, has been our tradition. I would make it, a motion at this point, to appoint Christine Goransky to a three-year term on the Community Service Advisory Commission, and that appointment will be ratified formally by resolution at the June 10 council meeting.
Okay, I'll second that. Now, under these circumstances, would we take a vote on this motion, and then just...
Only because the next meeting is June 11, I think, and your next meeting is June 10. So in order to have this person kind of in place, and we'll formally do it on June 10.
Okay, but we're going to take a vote on Amy's motion in a second. If you call for the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Saleh?
Yes.
Mayor Lecliter?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Roundtable, then, and John, we'll lead off with you.
Let's see, one of the residents brought it to my attention, the pedestrian bridge for our Bridge Street Corridor, they were concerned that the bridge would span over the new River Road, so instead of dead-ending in that, and they had a lot of good reasons for that, so I don't know if that's a consideration or not.
It lands west of the new River Road, there'll be a platform there, and then the issue of how it crosses the road, so it does not span the road.
And so, the residents would access that by...
Via the new park, and access to the park, and really, all of the planning that you were updated on, in that memo that you can take a look at, the details of how those things fit together, where they will be parking, how pedestrians will cross from one side to the other, the landing platform, and the area around the bridge landings, particularly on the east side of the river, all those are elements that now move to the next step by virtue of this next round of planning and preliminary engineering.
So we're going to work out those fine details, on how the people living in the four or five stories are going to access this, that's what I was really concerned with.
Absolutely.
The other item was, I absolutely love it when citizens come forward, and we have a special group of people in our town, and have somebody that actually wants to come forward and sort of implement a program, and I think it's very meritorious, and I'd like to see him get involved in the Community Service Advisory Committee. We have a resident by the name of Mike Carr, who was a geocache specialist, and he said there's 200 to 300 hidden already in Dublin. And he has, there's also an association here that meets, and what I guess is beneficial for this idea is, this is, you know, you go out with your GPS on a Saturday or Sunday with your kids, or your family, or friends, and you locate these hidden objects. And for the kids, you know, they might have an army soldier, or a frog, or some rubber thing in them or something, but it's sort of a fun thing to do. But done right, what it does really is get people to explore the downtown area, our park system, areas of really, of interest, that, you know, maybe not get the attention that they certainly deserve. So it gets them out on little adventures, to sort of really get to know the community. And I think tonight, Fred Hahn was talking about, you know, something I didn't know, someone at our table was talking about the mini old man's cave, that was up on a piece of property that I wasn't aware of, and it really doesn't have any press, but, you know, a way to get people to come out and find all these places is this, sort of this geo idea. So Mike Carr has volunteered to do this whole thing, helped set it up, worked with the city, do group ones, there, I guess there's a kind of, a whole series of different ways to do this, you can go out, you know, solo with your family, and there's group adventures and this kind of thing. So he is kindly, he said, no, I'd love to do this for the town, and he's a specialist, so I'd like to see, see if we can get him involved in this kind of thing. And he wasn't asking for a budget, or any monies, but it looks like a neat way to get people out to see our community.
We can follow up and report back.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, the other comment is, I saw the War Memorial, and again, thanks to Rick and Mike, it is a wonderful piece of work, and Fred said the glass went in yesterday, and it's just really a neat, neat project, the KIA Memorial, and I hope everybody gets a chance to come out on Memorial Day for our celebration, and see this completed service memorial to our fallen heroes. So, thank you.
Thanks, John. Merrily.
I, I had kept this article that we already talked about, Chase, and what a great opportunity this is for Dublin. I thought it was a really excellent article, and I just had one question, and I'm not sure that anybody could respond this evening, but it spoke about the vacancy rate in Dublin, and I was wondering, what is our commercial vacancy rate at this point? Because this seemed pretty high to me, but I didn't have a reference point.
I actually know this one. You know, CBRE was quoted in that article, saying, I think, 22%, which is incredibly inflated. They were really talking about predominantly the large blocks of space. We actually have an inventory of all of our Dublin buildings that shows 2 million more square feet than most of the brokerage people are counting, because we also count buildings like Cardinal Health, because it's a building that, if that company ever left, the building stays here. So we count all of that inventory, any building in town that's over 10,000 square feet, where most of those brokers will only count buildings over 20, sometimes 50,000 square feet. So if you look at the larger complete inventory of all the office space in Dublin, we're about 14%.
And is that pretty reasonable?
It is, and that's before the Chase announcement, so it actually will drop it, probably at least a percentage point.
Thank you. Marcia and I attended the May 9 Morpsey Board Meeting, and a presentation was made by Matt Greason, City Manager of Worthington, and Nick Gill, who's the engineer with Morpsey on our 27033 interchange, and I thought they did an excellent job, and Marcia had, or staff, had created a document of the facts, you know, about this, and I don't know if we've all been given this before, or where we all got, where, I'm never sure exactly where I get these things from, but, did we give this out every day?
Yeah, that, that's the updated version, that Community Relations, they've, they periodically update.
So maybe in our next packet, everybody could be given this, because it really is good talking points for, if anybody should ask you any questions about the new design and all. And, you know, I, I felt that, in general terms, people were supportive. We are asking Morpsey to do something that they've never done before, and that's contributing to a state project. And I know Marcia's had further meetings on this with them, and, you know, we're hopeful still that there will be an approval completed by Morpsey, and voted on by the A-team and the commission, probably next month, I suppose. But again, it's a first, and if it is approved, which we have reason to believe it probably will be, certainly from council, I think we would want to send a letter, a letter to William Murdock, the Director of Morpsey, and to Marilyn Brown, Commissioner Brown is the Chair of Morpsey for another year. The, I also had an opportunity, I think Kathy had mentioned last winter, that the National League of Cities has many affinity groups, and one of them is Women in Municipal, Women in Municipal Government, and I was voted on to their Board of Directors last December, and so they have a spring workshop that I attended Thursday and Friday last week in Chicago, and they had really excellent speakers, and a large number of the speakers were really speaking on, really, three things. One was education, and the importance of education for any city. And of course, we most recently see a lot of publicity about this for the City Schools of Columbus, and the impact of their challenges are having on economic development. But, and we certainly have always rated, been rated very highly in Dublin, but we ought to be conscious, really, there's going to be a new rating system, and what does that mean? We know that our population is changing pretty substantially, that attends the school, and what does that mean in terms of service? And now we'll be going through another transition with a new superintendent. So I know, Rick, you're our current liaison there, and stay close to all of that, but, you know, I think we want to be conscious of the role that has. Another of their major issues, which they had some curb speakers on, was health, and the role that cities play in both their land planning, and, like we do, you know, with parks and everything else, but also then for their own employees. And I felt that one thing perhaps that was missing is they had formal speakers on it, but they didn't allow an opportunity for people in there, the elected officials, to actually speak about what they're doing in their own communities. Because I felt like, in listening and talking informally to people, we probably had a much more significant program than the majority of them did, and several asked me to send them copies of what we have, so I'll have to get with you on that. Anne, I'll leave all this information with Anne, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy?
Yes, I have one question about the Ohio Edison, trimming the trees, and it mentions that any wood too large will be left there for the homeowners. That's a bit of a concern for me, in case the homeowner is not able to get rid of it, unless people drive along and pick it up, but it doesn't seem like that's really what they should be responsible for.
I know Ohio Edison, as well as AEP, work pretty closely with the residents, so I'm sure they, they try to assist them. If it is something that's too large, and the resident has issues, they can put them in touch with some assistance, but we've not heard any, any concern at this point.
Okay, so we will keep aware of that if possible.
Yes.
On a lighter note, several weeks ago, we did have Senior Idol, and it was sponsored by Brookdale Senior Living and Home Wealth, and it was for- And it was for the Parkinson's Foundation. If you remember, our mayor was one of the judges. The other two judges were flown in from out of town. I'm not going to say anything, Tim. It was very much fun. They had a nice hors d'oeuvres, but it was very fun. And it started out, I'll have to say it started out a little slow, and they used the paddles, and they made some really good comments. But toward the end, everybody had had their hors d'oeuvres and everything. Toward the end, the audience really got into it. So, I guess that might have been a little uncomfortable for Tim, but the audience was yelling out scores. And then when the paddles were up, the audience booed people. And so, it was really a lot, it doesn't sound fun, but it was really a lot of fun.
I thought this was on city property.
You kind of had to be there. That we were booing?
No, but I mean, you know, you said hors d'oeuvres, and then they got into it.
Oh.
Sort of sounded like there was some other kind of hors d'oeuvres.
Well, you know, when you're a senior, all you need is for a full stomach. You don't need anything else. Any case, well, I was there, you know, I put myself in that. But they raised almost $900 for this Parkinson's Association. And the Home Wealth is going to match that. They were very enthusiastic. Once again, they were complimentary to our staff and the place that it was presented. So, and Tim, I appreciate your doing that. I don't think I would have as much bravery as you had on that. Went to...
Well, I think the one comment or the one part of the program that you're referring to is where at least some portion of the audience didn't like my score. But I gave a contestant, so anyway, I needed protection to get out, but...
Integrity, Tim.
That's integrity, right. That's right.
Well, if you're going that way, you head behind the paddle, too.
Okay.
Went Saturday morning to the dedication of the park for Jack Framby's. And Jack has an involvement with Dublin. Many of you know, he graduated from Dublin High School in 1950. He was on the fire department, which was a volunteer fire department. He was our mayor in 1966 to 1972, when they brought in Ashlyn, and he began to work with Jack Nicholas. So, this was a great tribute to Jack and his family at that point. While we were there, and Sandra was there, and we, and Sandra took pictures and forwarded it to Fred. They have a bench program, if you will, and the benches are metal. And at the back, they put bike racks, so it looks like part of the bench. And it's really quite attractive. But not only that, in the bench, they carve out their name. That says Village of Shawnee Hills, and then they put a leaf in there. I guess that's their trademark. Sandra's passing around the picture right now. Then, on top of that, if you want to donate a bench in memory of someone, you can have their name put on the side also cut into. So, I'm hoping that we will look at some of these benches that, if nothing else, have the name on it. And it's forever, it's not like it's a plaque, and the bike rack on the back of it. And while I was there with Pat Monahan, which is their mayor, we did discuss the intersection. And we did not go real detailed in it. But of course, they're anxious to do something also because of the, I, don't start, please, because of the pedestrian traffic. So, it would be something, though, that their council is very proud of what they're doing now. And it would be something for us to get together with their council and start making some headway there. And my last item is something I'd like you all to think about. It deals with the fence code. And in 2000, we changed the fence code, and I never really understood it. But somehow, we're doing the fence code, so it has to be a percentage setback from the rear yard. And if you have, like, your house set back and the property's not that deep, what happens is that the fence cuts off your yard. And what brought this up to me was that a couple were putting a proposal on a house, and the staff was very accommodating with talking to them about the fence code. They, it was an R2 property, there was no development text. So, some of the fences were to the property line because they were there before that the code came in. And if they want to replace them, they can replace them right where they are. Some are not. In this case, the buyers felt that the fence, according to the fence code, would literally cut the backyard in two, which would make it almost not usable even for family picnics or things like that. And unfortunately, two families suffered on this, the family that wanted to sell the house and the family that wanted the house. I know it's kind of a hard situation, but it goes both ways. If you go into a neighborhood and you see fences that are on the property line, you sort of assume you can do that. So, if there would be a modification, you have people now that have accepted the current fence code. And then you still have, you'll still have that variation. But I would like us to look at this, and it didn't make sense to me because of your fence is like 20% off of the back property line. Is that right? Then you have this devil strip back there, and I'm not sure how that helps with the view shed. But I also noticed that BZA had a fence code request variance last time. So, I talked to Steve about that, and I was going to ask, Tammy, you came to help me out on this, telling me how many variances you typically get for this. And these are in areas that don't have restrictions, you know, they're straight zoning. Oh, is that, so that's not...
Thanks, Tammy.
Sure, I'm sorry. Yes, we've had seven.
Okay, and they were all turned down, I would suppose?
I believe there was one that the board approved, but we've denied a majority of them, yes.
And can you relate the exact rule? Is it like 20% of the total lot that it has to be setback from?
It depends. It generally ranges from 20 to 25% depending, because all of our PUDs have specific regulations. So, our R1, R2, R3, I think it goes up to 25%. But it does have that impact. It does dissect the rear of the property.
And if you all would be willing, I would like her, some, since she just said it dissects the property. For those developments that do not have development texts or restrictions, it's for the R1, R2 properties, it's very inconvenient for anybody to have any real usable space. So, I'm just wondering if we could look at that and have staff look at that and look at ways to make it, Steve, I think you said, ways to make it not so noticeable, like split rail, depending on the use of, relying more on the use of materials.
Kathy, I would like to offer a perspective on that. I don't get very many complaints, generally speaking, as is borne out by our citizen survey. People are very happy to live in Dublin. But the one thing that I've consistently gotten during my time on council, talk homeowners association groups, individuals, I constantly get asked, why, what's up with the fence code? Why is it that if my neighbor has a full yard fence and I have a full yard, and a full yard fence on the other side of me, I have to have this little, you know, pen in effect that only fences the building envelope? And it looks worse that way than if I just would have connected to the fence. And it's similar, you know, similar problem to what you're describing, where it doesn't do anything. You know, I explained about the view shed and wanting to have the open. And the point is, well, the view is already interrupted, and it's going to look worse and be more obstructive to have this, you know, partial fence. And so, what I have always said to anyone who complains about the fence code, and the people are upset that they can't fence their full yard, they don't have full use of their, of their own personal land that they own. By and large, I'd say probably for the seven complaints that, or the seven variances that have been applied for, you probably would end up with, you know, maybe three, four times that. People who might like to build a fence, but they make a phone call to staff or they find out, you know, by reading online that they're not able to. So, you know, I would agree. I certainly am no fan of fences personally, but I sort of see the other side of it, and I understand what you're saying. And certainly, I've been asked multiple times, and my response is always, well, you know, council voted on this, you know, back before I was on council. And I think that in order for that to be changed, it's going to have to be a citizen movement. You know, people are going to have to, you know, come forward to us or BZA or Planning Commission or staff, you know, as a group, and make it an effort to let us know how they feel about it. And of course, that hasn't happened. But I agree with you, and I would be willing to have our planning staff revisit that.
There are so many PUDs and deed restrictions. There's so many neighborhoods that have that already.
Right.
So, it's like you're, you know, what you're talking about. I just feel like to chop your yard in half when you really want a fence for whatever reason, to keep kids in or to keep kids out, or to, you know, whatever reason, that it doesn't seem right.
I just, I want to make sure that I'm clear, you know, because I thought that the fence code, the current fence code reflected the community sentiment with respect to not wanting to enclose our yards to the property line with fences. And I know, I've heard council members here, you know, say that that's, you know, part of the big appeal of living in Dublin, and a lot of people that formerly lived in the city of Columbus or other communities, which allowed that, I think it's been referred to variously as the stockade effect and so forth. So, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because I'm not certain what it is I'm hearing. Is that, in other words, in your neighborhood, Amy, in my neighborhood, in Kathy's neighborhood, that what you're proposing that we give consideration to is allowing fences, and perhaps even, you know, of limited design and so forth, but allowing any property owner that wanted to, to enclose their rear yard to the property line?
I'm not saying that personally. I said I'm not a fan of fences. I'm saying that I get lots of people asking me about the fence code, and I don't think it's unreasonable to consider it.
Well, seeing that we only have 2.3 by the math of these a year, I think one thing we might want to look at, if there's still a belief that we should have an open concept, okay, for the backyards, and that's what makes Dublin unique, instead of a whole bunch of different fences that come binding together at four corners in people's property, that we might take a look at, if the objective is to give them a place so their dog can run, or it's a small area fenced in for their little children, there is a, there's a regulation in mere field on how to do that, where it's up against the house on a certain side of the house, and allows for people to have a dog area without impeding the overall commonality of the common views, which has sort of been our tradition. So, we might want to look into that legislation, because that's been working really well up there for about 30 years. And you still have the whole open concept. But then you also meet the people that need a fence for little children and for dogs without doing what Kathy's saying, where you strip the fence down the middle of the yard and break the yard up. That doesn't really work. So, you might want to look at that.
Are you talking about a dog run for children?
No, I'm talking about an enclosure that goes out so many feet from the rear of your house, that functions, provides what most people are seeking without damaging the overall view of the neighborhood.
Here's, yeah, it's something to look at.
I mean, we just need to direct the staff, I guess, too.
Right, yes. Look at this issue and bring back some thoughts.
And we can, and we can provide you with the, okay, yeah, the information that was put together, because I remember this was discussed for many, many meetings and a lot of, so we can provide you with some of that as a reminder of all the reasons why.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be good.
Kathy, anything else?
I'm sure you hope not. No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thanks. Mike?
Yeah, I've got six items I'd like to go over here tonight, so. Actually, I want to echo John's comments about the Memorial Day observation and the KIA dedication. I don't know if you went over the times, but it begins at 11 o'clock in historic Dublin at the Bridgepoint Center. And traditionally, we've walked from there to the cemetery, stopping on the bridge, the throwing of the wreath to honor the Navy veterans, and then the rest of the programming, which is really special. There'll be a Memorial Day commemoration at the grounds of remembrance at noon, and then a complimentary picnic lunch on the grounds of the Dublin Library, as is our tradition. So, please come out for that. That's all I have. Thank you.
You know, Mike and I forgot to thank, the committee members really appreciate this, the special work of Fred Hahn and Sarah Ott in putting together that memorial and all the other details. It was a lot of work. And you worked through a whole bunch of different requirements on who could be on that monument and why, and researching them out. And, you know, I think all three of us really appreciate your work. And I should have said something, and Mr. Philibon, too, you know, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mike. Rick?
Well, they took my roundtable, so, yeah, we'll be out there Monday. I think Sarah and Fred have done a fantastic job. And a lot of the veteran groups, I think, are going to be really touched and moved by this monument. So, I'm very much looking forward to it.
Me, too. Thanks, Rick. Amy?
I just have a couple of things. One, in driving around, I've noticed there are a lot of ash trees that are dead in people's yards and so forth. And I wonder if, you know, as the trees come down, we're going to notice sort of gaps in the landscape. And I know in another community that I lived in previously, there was a partnership between citizens and the city where the citizens were given an opportunity to purchase trees at somewhat of a discount. They were given advice. The city, I think, kind of used their buying power, if you will, and passed on savings to encourage removal of the dead trees and reforestation. And I don't know if that's something that we could do or we could look into. But it was a great partnership. And if you look, gosh, on Cambridge Boulevard in Grandview Marble Cliff, right now, there's, they were in bloom a few weeks ago, a row of pear trees, the Bradford pears or some kind of flowering pear tree. And those were all planted as part of that program, and then other areas were planted as well. I've just noticed a lot of trees in people's yards, and it doesn't appear that anything's happening with them. They're going to become a hazard at some point, and, you know, I don't know what will happen. But I certainly would hate to see all those front yard trees that were required as part of, you know, their PUD or their rezoning go away. And if we could encourage our citizens to replant through, you know, some kind of formal something or other, I think that might be a good program. It wouldn't cost us anything necessarily, but we'd still get the trees that we need.
We can check into that and see what issues there are and how such a program would work and report back.
I got an estimate yesterday for $2,000 for one in my backyard to remove an ash tree that's probably 100 years old. So, there won't be any money left over for replacement trees.
Exactly, and I don't know, you know, if that removal could be included or not. But there are certainly, you know, an awful lot of them around. It's very sad. And I hate to see the loss of those. So, treat your ash trees if you can possibly do it. That's the moral to the story.
Speaking of which, just real quickly, if anybody happens to know, are we still treating the ash trees on Arlington?
Oh, on Arlington? Is Fred back there?
Good, thank you. Very good. Thank you. Is there anything else, Amy?
Yeah, I have one more thing, and I'll try to be brief, but it's important to me. Every four years, each council member has to consider what we're going to do with our work lives here at the city and whether or not we want to recommit to a role on council. And if we do, we have to commit to running for reelection. And it's a family decision. For me, it's always been a family decision and a life decision. And I've been thinking about that a lot lately, and Kathy making her announcement a couple of weeks ago sort of got me realizing that it's that time of the year, and it's that part of the course of the four years when I need to be thinking about that and asking myself if I want to continue to do this work. And for me, the answer is yes, so I wanted to let everybody know that I will be seeking reelection to the Ward 2 council seat. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Last Friday evening, I attended a dinner at the Embassy Suites Hotel here in town honoring Philip Barth. Some of you may know Philip has been active in the Japan-America Society of Central Ohio and certainly has been instrumental in its success. He is currently an employee of Honda, previously worked in the banking industry. His wife is a former Dublin schoolteacher. He has a... His wife is a former Dublin school teacher. He has a daughter, I believe, that teaches at either Sells or Indian Run. Maybe it's Indian Run, I think.
Indian Run.
But in any event, the dinner was to honor Mr. Barth as the outgoing honorary Japanese Consul General. I think that his term was five years, and there was a, a nice little turnout, primarily of JASCO members. But in addition there, too, and, and I was there to present Mr. Barth with a proclamation, and designating last Saturday as Philip Barth Day in the city of Dublin. And, but in addition there, too, the, the Consul General of Japan, Consul General Matsuda was there. And he announced that his time as Consul General is ending, I think effective the end of June. And I think his, he's served thus far for about two years and nine months, he said. I guess the terms are traditionally about three to four years, but he has been called back to Japan. But those in attendance said that previous Consul Generals might have made it to Dublin, you know, a couple times in their term. And if any of you've noticed, Consul General Matsuda has been here more times than I can count. And I think it's, it's resulted in a, in a great relationship between our community and his office, and the Japanese population that lives in our community. And so he will certainly be missed. I hope we can do something nice for him prior to him leaving. And then last Saturday morning, as you all know, I was invited to the Miracle League. It was their designated community day. And so I threw out a ceremonial first pitch. I didn't throw it over the backstop or bounce it over the plate. I got reasonably close to the plate. But that's not really what's important. The, the folks involved with the Miracle League, you know, expressed their gratitude publicly to everyone in attendance to city council for its support of the Miracle League. And more specifically, recently, the misters that city council helped pay for last year, they said fortunately, they haven't needed to use the misters yet this year. But if you've ever been out there on a hot Saturday, you know, in July, you know, those really come in handy. And then also, they're adding to the existing facility where the restrooms are. There's some, some storage. It looks like there's a garage door. And anyway, they said that that space was needed, and that they wanted to express their appreciation of city council for support of that project as well. So, anyway, just wanted to pass that along. And then finally, between now and our next council meeting, Dublin will, once again, and I'm going to need help from people here, for the 37th or 38th time, host, proudly host the memorial tournament. Is it 37 or 38? Oh, come on.
76 is his first year.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's been a long time.
36.
But, you know, as I said, we'll proudly host the tournament for the however many time in several years. But, you know, certainly, as we all noticed, because we've been through this so many times in the past, you know, we know how hard staff works in support of this tournament, I mean, across all the city staff. And, you know, we already see things taking shape in the community. We see everybody working double time, you know, to make our public spaces as beautiful as they can be, you know, neighborhoods and residents. And, you know, everybody's very proud, you know, to host this tournament in Dublin, Ohio. So anyway, that's all I have. We're adjourned, and I'll see you next time. Thanks.